This time we'll call for a motion to come out of executive session.
Mr. Chair.
You have a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If we have any action coming out of executive session.
Yes, sir, I have one. Mr. Chair. We ask to move to a parlayed legislature to negotiate the writ new extension and hang a thirty-fourth of the term and condition discussed in his air session, including the execution of the lease for TMP 062-21-01-00100, sir.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. At this time, we'll have our pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation passed to action.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every meaning and justice for all.
One more, we'll hear back to God. We come this way one more time on a night that was promised us by your blessing we are here. Father God, we are getting ready to go into the meeting, Father God, tonight. Father God, we pray that everyone now covering himself according to Father God. And Father God, as now would talk ahead with each and every one God to say, Father God, that all is said and done, Father God, as we leave this place and not your presence, we ask you to give us traveling mercy to go back down on it. If it's northeast, west, or south in the direction we should go, we ask all the many blessings, little son Jesus, may everybody say amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyd, got it?
Yes. I'd like to welcome everyone to our council meeting this evening. It's good to see you roomful and look forward to y'all being with us this afternoon and spending the evening. We got a lot of information to cover, so hopefully we can move through it efficiently and do the work that's set in front of us. At this time, council, y'all have seen the consent agenda items. Is there any discussion on any of those agenda items where I consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. At this time, I'll call for approval of the agenda.
Aye.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries to approve our agenda as set. Next item is approval of minutes from December 5th, 2022, and January 3rd, 2023.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion, comment? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. At this time, we'll move into public hearings and action items, and we'll start with Ms. Jessica Daly of the Low Country Council of Governments. We've got a public hearing and a presentation on the annual needs assessment. Glad I can't be welcome, Jessica.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman. Yeah, there should be a PowerPoint for y'all to look at.
Slide that microphone a little closer to you, please, ma'am, so we can all hear you.
There should be a PowerPoint in your package that you can all look at, follow along with, but this is your annual needs assessment for community development, block grant funding. This is your chance to identify and rank the needs that the county has for grant projects. So because this is HUD funding, so you have to follow up here housing requirements. So if anybody feels that they've been discriminated against on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, disability, family status, or national origin, next slide shows you a number that you can call, 843-473-3990. And that's the Cog will address that need.
Well, you did something different.
So the CBG program exists primarily to help, to provide economic opportunities and to help those of low and moderate income. In Jasper County, what that means is the next slide right there.
They roll here.
No.
Slide that microphone and then talk into it for us, please. Just get, it should slide towards you some. Yes, pull it through. There you go.
How about that? Everybody hear that? Not really. What else to do with that?
Mine have to yell out.
All right. How about now? That better?
Yes, ma'am.
Don't want to break anybody's eardrum. So we're talking about low and moderate income families. We're talking about household income, and for a two-person household, that means $38,300 or less per year. For a four-person household, that would be less than $47,850 per year for an entire household. So that's what we mean when we talk about LMI, or low to moderate income. Now, no, you're good. So the annual allocation this year is $19,740,854. That's for the entire state for the non-entitlement units of local government, and once you have a project, you can apply for a piece of that funding. So there are three primary categories. That is community, community development, business development, and regional planning. The community development is the vast majority of that funding, and we can break that down to the next two slides. So the first part of our community development is community infrastructure. That's our spring round. That's water, sewer, drainage, roads, projects ranging from $50,000 to a million, and that's our quest application, our application requests are due March 17th. The application is due in April. You guys will probably not be eligible because you've been very fortunate to have three projects underway. So you're probably looking at a fall round project, which starts with community enrichment on the right, and there's a variety of possible activities in that. We can do regional infrastructure, libraries, public facilities, things like that in LMI areas, because the county is not a whole low to moderate income. It would have to be a low to moderate income area of the county. So again, projects from $50,000 to $750,000. And then our local priority is also fall round, so that has a little bit different flexibility. We're talking about historic preservation, innovation, energy conservation, parks, trails, and greenways are most of what's been funded in that to date, but there's a million dollars statewide, and again, application requests are due in August, so if you have a project in mind, you can get started on that now. And then we have our ready to go. That is anything that is shovel ready. So the engineering is done, the arrival and clearances is all set, and it's usually something that's relating to some sort of emergency. We have weather, weather events and things like that. And then we have neighborhood revitalization. That one is a little bit different in that you can do multiple activities in a low to moderate income neighborhood. So water, sewer, drainage, roads, sidewalks, lighting, cameras, things like that, all in one concentrated neighborhood. You do have to have a neighborhood plan in advance, so that's something that you would look at in the summer for that fall round. And all of these projects have to meet a national objective. There are three to choose from. There is low to moderate income, prevention of slumming alike, or other urgent community needs when you're generally talking about a designation from the government, from the governor, or something like that, and they all have to have a 10% match requirement. So that was all community development. Then we have business development, $2 million statewide. If you have a new or expanding business that you're looking to help out in a low to moderate income community, that's what that can help fund. Regional planning is $500,000, and that's dispersed to the COGS, and state technical So you do have an opportunity zone. If you had a project in that opportunity zone, it would get 10 extra bonus points, but you have to have like 150 bonus points to even qualify, so the 10 points is just a little bump. And you cannot have projects that are older than 30 months. Unfortunately, you do right now have one that's that old, but I'm hoping that will flow into the near future, and then you'd be eligible in the fall. No more than one neighborhood, no more than one ready to go, no more than one in the same And then we can talk about, those are all projects that the county can apply for. Then we talk about our home consortium, which is something that people, individuals can apply for to generally, we look, we work on home rehab, so owner occupied homes. We cannot address trailers, but stick built homes, and the person that lives in the home has to be low to moderate income. So you do repairs to get the home up to standards, and the loan is forgiven, the funding is forgivable if they're still in the house five years down the road.
Excuse me, can you go back over that for a second?
Yeah.
Could you go back to the slide, increase accessibility to the adequate affordable housing?
So we occasionally, the consortium occasionally will work with something like a habitat to build new homes, but primarily we do rehab.
It's for the home?
Correct.
Not for accessibility to the home?
I'm not sure I understand.
Okay. What I'm thinking about is some of the roads that we have private roads going in, we really need help, and they're low and middle income, and we can't get an ambulance in there. Would that fit into that?
I don't think home has ever done that, but I mean, we could suggest that to the home board. I don't know. CBG can do roads, and generally in the $50,000 to $500,000 range, you're probably looking at a dirt road because there's not much you can do for paper in that.
Right. We're just looking to put stone in there or something like that. So we would apply for that?
CBG could, home might could. I don't, I'd have to talk to the home board.
Can you let Andy know because that's something that would be a big help.
Okay, I will.
Thank you. Sorry.
That's okay. And so if anybody, the council in particular and the public want to give us their priority housing needs for the area, our annual action plan is to be submitted on April 28th, so that would be our submission of the greatest needs in this area. So if anybody...
Jessica, I know I had a question. Mr. Kemp, what's that? The tribunators that you were talking about?
Tribunators.
Yeah.
One of the tribunators for the cars.
Would that qualify? Because I was looking at the safety.
They don't like to fund things that can walk away, so if they later disappear, I don't know, but we can do emergency equipment.
We want to have that for our emergency vehicles in recreational areas.
What we've done in other counties is ambulances or fire trucks, but they have to be in a low to moderate income area, and an ambulance and a fire truck has a pretty big range, so it's harder to find a neighborhood that suits. So we can look at the, what tribunators would qualify as something?
Yeah, just let Mr. Ford even out, please.
Okay, tribunators and tributaries. Got you. Okay.
Any questions from council? We've got a public hearing on this. Does anybody have any questions for, as failed. Jessica, we'll do our public hearing.
And so if you guys would rank your, at your convenience, and let us know.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the floor to the public. Anybody who might have a comment as it relates to our Low Country Council of Government's presentation by Ms. Daly. Public hearing going once, public hearing going twice, close our public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Daly, and we'll get back with you on those items. Next, we have Ms. Lisa Wagner. We have a public hearing as well as consideration of a second reading for order 0-2023-03 to amend Article 8, 8 of the Jasper County zoning ordinance, Gateway Corridor, Ovalay District, to better define the location of the designated highway and amend the official zoning map of Jasper County to expand the GCOV to include the property located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Alligator Alley and Off-Ramp Road as depicted on the attached map. Ms. Wagner.
Good evening, Chairman and council members. The subject property consists of 31, I'm sorry, I'm telling the wrong thing here. This is public here and second reading for the Gateway Corridor, Ovalay District. This proposal was just to expand the Gateway Corridor, Ovalay District, to better define it in our ordinance. To, in our ordinance, it currently said it's the designated highway, and there was a map that wasn't adopted previously. In the cover ordinance that adopted it, it just said it was at the intersection of Highway 17 and Alligator Alley. So the ordinance for you tonight, just, it describes it, instead of calling it the designated highway, it gives a physical description, and then we have this map to be included. So it will pick up the property here that previously was not thought of to be in the gateway corridor. This hatched area is Highway 17 from String Place to the Alligator Alley. As if Mr. Kemp had asked at the last meeting, how do we know it won't continue to be expanded? This off-ramp road ends right here, and right here, those are federal lands right there, and the, and you know, that's the wildlife refuge, so. We put two signs out near the area along Highway 17, and one at the property, and two along 17, and we didn't receive any comments, and we put a notice in the paper.
Do we have a public hearing to read the questions from council before we do that? At this time, we'll open the floor for a public hearing as it relates to this specific agenda item. Public hearing going once, public hearing going twice. Public hearing is now closed. This time, we'll call for a motion, approval or disapproval. Call for a motion. Oh, we're going to get to public hearing now. This is agenda item number nine.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
To accept the second reading of ordinance 02023-03 to amend Article 8, colon 8, Jasper County zoning ordinance, the gateway corridor.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Devin, Chair, would you let the public know that we are now starting the agenda item that is on baby part DVD? I know there's people outside that are waiting, so I'd like to let, let them in, they can stand around the side of the wall, so I just want to be able to make sure to be in. Y'all come on in and just stand along the side of the wall. Plenty of room over here to my left, y'all, stand over here. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is a public hearing and consideration of second reading of ordinance 0-2022-26 to adopt planned development district of two tracts of land consisting approximately of 26.63 acres bearing Jasper County tax back number 081-00-04-007 and 081-00-04-080 located along North Oakley Highway approximately two miles east of the intersection of Highway 462 and known as Bailey Park PDD. The second reading was tabled and we've rescheduled it for tonight. Ms. Lisa Wagner and I, Director of Planning, is going to go through the project and talk about the existing zoning and the proposed zoning to kind of give the public and as well as council some differences between the zoning to help us make an educated decision and make sure that everybody here knows the details and try to help the council understand both sides. So we do have a public hearing. I would like, I know that there's several people here on the Bailey Park PDD. I've got some people's names that are signed up. I know that everybody's kind of singing the same song off the same sheet of music, so to speak. So for the essence of time, I would ask to kind of keep that in mind for the sake of time. We know everybody's concerns. And you certainly have the right to voice your opinion. I'm just making that statement in the essence of time. I don't know that we really need 30 people to speak. I think everybody's got some, a voice that'll speak for them, that'll be here as a spokesperson. With that being said, Ms. Wagner, take it away.
Okay, the applicant has requested a planned development district, PDD zoning designation, which will be known as Bailey Park if approved. The property consists of two parcels, Track A, which is currently zoned community commercial. And it consists of 6.63 acres that's highlighted in blue. And then the parcel directly behind it is Track B, is currently zoned residential. It consists of 20 acres. Track A is located along Highway 170 while Track B has access to Old Bailey's Road. The planning commission originally reviewed this application in May 2022 and again February 14, 2023. County Council gave first reading on August 15, 2022. The second reading was tabled after holding a public hearing on September 6, 2022. Since this application is, since the last time that County Council has seen this application, the revisions to the Bailey Park PDD change its Track A from mixed use commercial to residential with a mixed housing product. Multifamily apartments was proposed as one of those housing products as well as single family residential. It eliminates the 65,000 square feet of commercial uses. It adds no more than seven and a half units per acre. Track B has been changed from 12 units per acre, which was 233 units originally, to seven and a half units per acre. Based on the upland acres, the total residential density for both Track A and B would be limited to approximately 187 units. It could be a little less, it would not be anymore.
And Ms. Wagner, one thing I want to do is differentiate between existing zoning and the proposed zoning.
Yes.
So when you are given these numbers, I want to be able to, you know, lay that out and say, if existing zoning, this is the density, and proposed zoning, this is the density.
Yes.
You know, pros and cons of the differences that are important to everybody here.
Yes. And the only other thing, before getting there, I was just going to point out the traffic study was revised. It was based on 300 townhomes. And it showed a big reduction in traffic from 4,186 daily trips to 1,998. The AM peak hours were reduced from 168 trips to 116, while the PM peak hour trips were reduced from 374 trips to 150. But with the seven and a half units, that would further reduce the traffic by another 35%.
And the seven and a half units is based on the new zoning proposal?
That's right.
Not existing zoning?
That's right.
On the existing zoning, that density would be what?
The existing zoning.
Seven and a half to 12?
Originally, it was 12 units. So on the front piece, it's zoned community commercial. If we don't do a PDD, they have by right zoning of community commercial. They could come in, one of the uses is a multifamily apartment. So it's a conditional use. Based on the size of the property, they would meet the conditions and it could allow up to 10 units per acre in the apartments. The residential, while there is a subdivision regulation of maximum half acre and that would reduce, reduce the number of lots if it were a subdivision. But townhouses are allowed conditionally. They meet the maximum, they meet the minimum acreage requirement for that. That is 2,000 square feet per unit. So just looking at the raw numbers, that's basically 20 units per acre. Now, we know you can't get 20 units per acre when you minus out roads and open space and setbacks. But still, yeah, that's a lot more than seven and a half units.
Now, setbacks on the proposed zoning is more stringent than the existing zoning.
So in the PDD document that you have before you, we've put a limitation to the height requirement where it cannot exceed 35 height, 35 foot in height. Also, we've, there's a 20-foot buffer around the entire perimeter of the property. A 30-foot buffer where there's an existing residential property right beside it. Under by right zoning, they'd only have to provide a 10-foot buffer. So the PDD will provide for a little bit, it would provide for a better design. It would provide more innovative than just coming in with a townhouse development. There's 112 commercial uses that could be allowed in community commercial. I have given you a summary of those. I call it a short list. And then the long, then it's three pages of uses that was pulled directly out of the use regulations from the Jasper County zoning ordinance under the use chart.
One thing too, when Lisa says by right zoning, that's the existing zoning. Some of you may not know that terminology. Just make sure everybody's on the same page. That's the existing zoning.
What's allowed in community commercial and what's allowed in residential. And if I may just touch on the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does, the future land use map does identify this area as being in a rural conservation. It's designated as rural conservation, which seeks to protect and promote the character of Jasper County that largely exists today outside of the municipalities. In these areas, new development should be thoughtfully placed within the existing landscape. The land use chapter in general, when you first turn to our land use chapter, it recommends guidance growth and new development in or around the municipality, but also to areas where there is infrastructure and services, which is here, where you won't find it in your more rural areas. You're not going to find the infrastructure and services. So this project site is not near municipality, but it is located in the area where infrastructure and services are available to serve the site. The existing zoning is a planned development district. Sorry, the map's not working. It looks like we lost internet service. But across the street, it's a PDD. You have a high density mobile home park. To the south is Old Bailey's Road. It's a single family residential. And to the west, it's primarily vacant. You have commercial uses along Highway 170. And to the east immediately, to the east is a vacant property, but in its own community commercial and residential. So you have PDD zoning residential rural preservation. You have a general commercial nearby, right down closer to the red light there. And then I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Oh, the lady here that was here last time, that's the head of the developer.
She is?
Here's a question that I got. I thought I heard you say, Lisa, that you're going to put 20 units per acre?
Not currently, that's not the proposed. That's under the by right zoning. That's what's allowed. I mean, townhouses are conditional use and residential. And if you look at the density, it says you can have one unit per 2,000 square feet. If you think about your acreage, you come up with 20 units an acre. There's no way you'll ever get 20 units an acre.
Look at that, to this. A study was done down in Bailey Park. And one side of it's Dupont County, one side of it's Jasper County, I'm talking about. And that road, that Bailey Road.
Right.
And then that Bailey top. The houses is built in there. You see the distance in between. You see the houses is built on water there. Back when they built those houses, they had rules and regulations on how much they could get the water and one thing or another. And then all of a sudden, and this is what I can't understand with the law. Nobody's done a study down there to see what the people have been living down there all their life. It's built our whole community. To see what they had to say about their development. The first thing they do is they jump off and they sell this development land to a contractor. And we're going to come in there and we're going to put apartments, or we're going to put homes, or we're going to put whatever type of housing they put. And you're talking about putting, I mean, you're on top of one of them.
No, sir, we weren't talking about doing that many. I was just pointing out what the ordinance states under residential zoning.
Right.
That proposal was not.
But this lady here, the head of that developer, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
And that last time, you was in here and you said something about that y'all had to decide whether y'all would put townhouses, or y'all would build regular houses, or y'all might build apartment buildings in there.
Well, those are.
Y'all were undecided about what you said.
Well, we were undecided as to the layout of the product. We had narrowed it down to multifamily townhome and single family homes. But until we knew what the parameters were with the approval, we couldn't go in and lay out a conceptual plan. Ideally, what we would do is have the townhome product adjacent to 170, push it to the northern end of the property. The southern end of the property would house the single family product. And based on just preliminary layouts that we have sketched with our land planner, we're coming up with about 165 altogether max. And the majority of the, 165. So the majority of that.
On 26 acres.
On 26 acres, that's correct.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
And he could not answer the question the last time. And I know for a fact, the Dupont-Jasper water map was in here. They got a problem now that doesn't meet the maximum amount they could pump. They got to build another station so that they can pump more water. So that Polar Oil, part of Oakley, part of Sun City, another area that can have water to drink and more. And like I tell you, they get that water out of Sabato River. It's got to come out of Sabato River. At times, you can walk across that Sabato River. So they put them on allocation, they kept on irrigation during the summertime for slower water. But they can pump 30,000, 30 million dollars a day or whatever it is. He said he was pumping 19 million, they're going to increase to something like 35 million a day pumping water. The quantity of the water, where does it go come from? But you don't have that answer. The Dupont-Jasper Water Works didn't have all that answer either. Because like I tell you, the Sabato River can't stand so much. And if you get up there above Hartford and they decide they won't flow that water, or Guttin, Georgia's side, they're not going to put us more down here on this end. And part of Sabato River, and I like to get this point of call because nobody is concerned about the people and what the long-term effects it's going to be. Because part of Sabato River branches water until you get the Pewlsburg, the tide effect. And every year, or every five years, that tide gets further and further. And the freshwater gets further and further back to water of Gutt. And that's what they can't answer. And they have never given answer to this. How much quantity of water can the Sabato River hold? When everything is coming into Sun City, they talk like they're going to have 25 million more people than two and a half there. All that water doesn't come from Sabato River unless they're going to take the salt water. I asked him about the, you waited. Oh, he said, we're pumping on some of the golf courses. And then he said, we treat it, we put it back in the river. I said, you put it back in the river? Yeah, he said, he said it's treated in the water that's in it. But nobody had done the study to see what local people have been there all their lives, think about it. You got one of the group of people that said, we're going to put a big multi-billion dollar thing in it. I don't agree with it. I will agree with it because there's no infrastructure been there with 278, 170. You can make the infrastructure inside of it. But when you get out there with 278, you can't go out there now.
Well, I can't, I can't speak for the water authority. What I can say is that when we started this process last year and we went and met with the water authority, we had to get our will serve letters before we could even submit our application for the PDD request. Based on our original submission of 220 something units and 65,000 square feet of commercial, they provided us with a will serve letter. So, you know, I think they take into account what's entitled and what's already there. Because this property had entitlements by right under its current zoning. So they had to take that into account in planning for their future. But we do have our will serve letters, prime view for Jasper, committing to provide those services.
Now, like I say, they had to give you a full app on the water quantity, water quality. And I know they have some professionals that tell you they're doing all that. But they had something against them.
Any other questions, Councilor Gobain? Any other questions?
No, I don't have any other questions. I just don't agree.
Councilman Kiel, any questions?
Yes. My big concern is traffic. You have the Cs, Es, and Fs on the game on there. I think it was 8% was going towards Hilton Head, which is driving into Forest 62 of that area. How do you, how do you expect that Old Bailey Road to handle the volume? Since your traffic study, your traffic study says most of it has to go onto Bailey Road to a stop sign. And there would be a signalization there, which, to tell you the truth, my concern, the party building, it took them ages to get a traffic signal. It's just that I go up that 170 right now and it's a park lot. In fact, some of the infrastructure is so bad that at school, it becomes one lane. 170 becomes one lane and backs up. All this is state road sometimes. And since I lived down there, we had a road called Argent Boulevard. Right? I don't want it to be like Argent Boulevard. It is getting like Argent Boulevard. So yes, I know you have that density and all that. It seems that to me, you talk about seven and a half, but then all of a sudden, you say, well, when everybody get that? Then, but, just excuse me, let me just go and then you agree with me. When we had the higher density, you said the same thing. Why don't you just tell us what density's actually going to be? I know you can, but you must know something because you're saying that it's not going to be that. You say seven and a half, seven and a half. But you also said, and I don't know if this is for Lisa, if we give the zoning, and I know in the PDD, you said 32. Does that mean they could go to 50 without, they could change that? I mean, I don't know how that works. We don't have any plans, so we don't know what they're going to give us.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Okay, we have, we have 32 in there. 32 foot, 35 foot.
35 foot and maximum height.
And we just did it to 50. Now, is this a PDD, is it that?
We had to do 50 foot by right, but in the PDD document, it's already written 35 feet is a maximum height.
Yeah, but the PDD.
So the 50 foot is just a possibility that someone could ask for that has to meet certain criteria to get there.
I understand. It just that it seems to me, we're talking two things. When you listen to the planning, they ask questions, they don't know that yet. Yet, the developer, not, I'm not talking about just developer, I'm talking about almost every developer. Well, it's not going to be that. So why don't they tell us what it's going to be? Why do we just always say, it seemed to be one side. Why do, why are we just always saying, it, it seemed to be one side.
So, in all the PDDs that's ever been adopted, not just by Jasper County, but the city of Partyville, uh, there's a method that they use, uh, plus the density and the number of acres. And it gives this amount that we've never, in all of them, we've never seen them reach those numbers. And that's why when she came with twelve units of, well, we kind of said, you know, we're not gonna support twelve units, it's too much, we know you can't get twelve units. It's possible they'll get seven units. I mean, you, almost now you need an engineer design to uh design your stormwater facilities. Where's your roads, how much area does it take? Your buffers, your setbacks, to know what that exact number is. Um, it's possible. So, they can't exceed seven and a half the way this PDD is written. And also, they can't exceed the thirty-five feet in maximum height, the way this PDD is written, so, um, but it's gonna take that engineered land plan to give you that magic number, what is it?
Well, I just don't think the traffic warrants, this area warrants this without the full traffic. I mean, we'd have to even notice that's just start to look at getting money to do a program for here, for up there. We have a, the four sixty-two. That's not considered, the four sixty-two up to the Buford line. And just the, the traffic, right traffic into a stop sign, doesn't mean anything. And it, turning left and then turning, you only can turn left during the day or so, during the peak hours. I mean, I looked at that traffic study, and it's scary.
Which, which one did you look at the most recently?
The most recent one that I got. And it's Cs, in fact, it looks worse than the first one, Cs, Es, and F.
It's actually not, it's much better than the first one. And I do want to say that with the by right uses under the current zoning, the traffic is terrible. It's over forty-two hundred trips per day. The majority of your traffic and your trips per day are generated from commercial. We know that. When I removed the commer, the majority of the commercial element, leaving only the multifamily section, the, the traffic drop and the trip generation dropped significantly. Down to, um, based on three hundred homes, it dropped to nineteen hundred trips per day. We're not even looking at three hundred, we're looking at a hundred and eighty-seven. The, at a max, so it's even going to go lower than that. So under its current by right use and current zoning, it's a terrible traffic study. But that's what would be allowed to be constructed on that site. Um, by doing the PDD, we have relieved some of the traffic concerns, tremendously relieved it. We lowered the density. Um, to answer your question, seven and a half units per acre will fit comfortably on that site if I did nothing but townhomes. There would be plenty of open space, there would be plenty of um retention ponds, there would be room for sidewalks, roads, um garages, onsite parking, and, and one hundred and eighty-seven would fit comfortably if I did the two thousand square foot lot townhome. We don't want to do that. We don't want to do all townhomes. I think the property deserves some single family homes, they take up more room. So basically, we would look at a forty to fifty foot wide lot for the single family homes, giving up almost half the density of the townhomes. So when, when, the reason I can't answer the question as to exactly what will be there is because I don't have my boundaries yet from you guys. When you tell me yes or no on the PDD, that's gonna determine what I do next with the engineer. Because that's when we, the rubber meets the road, and the engineer will say, okay, well Jennifer, if I gave you nothing but townhomes, you're gonna get a hundred and eighty, that's all we can get, you gotta have twenty-five percent open space. If you want to do single family, you need to tell me how much of the land you're willing to dedicate to a single family home. Um, it might be that, that we end up doing seventy townhomes on the front and the balance of whatever we can fit in, in homes, single family homes on the back. But the, the boundary of seven and a half units per acre gives me the guideline to then back into what the ultimate density will be. And it's a, it's a, it's much less density than what is currently allowed. But I think it's better for that community. We've tried to work, listening to any objections. Um, we have reduced density, we've reduced traffic. We're giving up by right allowed uses that are more profitable than a hundred and eighty-seven residential units. So it's a win-win, I think, for everyone. The community doesn't get inundated with commercial and traffic that's gonna ingress and egress off of Bailey. I don't believe that the predominant ingress and egress will be Bailey Road, especially for our roughly hundred and eighty units. People want to take the path of least resistance with traffic. They're gonna come in off of one seventy, they're gonna leave off of one seventy. If DOT tells us that Bailey Road can, can be an, uh, an emergency access only, we'll be glad to do it. But I'm kind of at the mercy of the DOT as to what they tell me has to go there.
Well, the DOT says between, I, I think this should be really more of a workshop of this discussion, but the P. The traffic study says most of the traffic will go towards Hilton Head. And you're saying, they're saying, okay, the front on line one seven that you would put in there, it's gonna be a turn right only.
They have suggested that.
Everybody to go on Bailey Road to the stop sign and then turn left. I, I don't make, I don't know what sense that is.
So Councilman Kemp, um, the traffic study did recommend during peak hours that the traffic go to Old Bailey's Road. The traffic study is a recommendation by uh traffic engineers, and I'm certainly not one of those, but um that was their recommendation. Now, in order to do any development, whether it's this property or the one next door, or another one on Old Bailey's Road, they have to go to DOT and get encroachment permits. In the end, it's up to DOT what they're gonna require to mitigate, what they're going to allow. Um, they're going to review engineer plans and issue encroachment permits or require um the developer to pay for some mitigation.
Is Old Bailey a state road or?
It is a state road. And we know it's a small road, so.
And it's a major road, right, before one seven?
Sir?
It was, yes.
That wasn't a major road before one seven?
The other thing, Councilman Kemp, that I want to point out that I'm not sure at least the community is aware of. If the PDD, if we don't move forward with the PDD, the two parcels remain independent of each other. And the Bailey Road parcel only has access off of Bailey Road. So the PDD actually alleviates some of that congestion and concern. If they're developed separately, there's no guarantee that there'll be a cross easement between the commercial and the residential track. So whatever goes on that residential piece will have no choice but to use Bailey as its only ingress and egress point. So, I think the PDD pulls some of that concern off of the Bailey Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor, any questions?
Yeah, I'm asking Chris, um, who gonna pay to get that road done?
What's, which road is that?
Who be the road?
Get it done how, whatever?
Widen, because I, I rode that road and, and if that road was widened, I mean, it ain't gonna need no ditch, so where the ditch gonna be at for the water to run? So it'd widen the road, because then the ditch, ditch gonna be gone.
I'm, I'm not aware of widening it, I haven't been asked to widen it, it wasn't in any of our study. But the ditch will be there, it's in the right of way, we can't, we can't, Turk, we can't get rid of the ditch.
Okay, you said a hundred and eighty-seven units on twenty-six point six acres. Now, I rode down there and riding around, and I, and I look at uh Okeechobee Park, and they got only a hundred and eleven. So I, how, on twenty-eight acres, by twenty-eight acres, how y'all gonna do a hundred and eighty-seven on twenty-six?
Because the product will be a mix. It won't be all single family homes, and the townhome product is half the width of the single family product. So we.
I look at, I'm sorry, I look at the, the, the little speeds that they got. So how much speed do you even have for people saying, have it like, say like land use? How close, how close do you units gonna be?
So the, the guidelines for the, um, for the PDD townhome is that you can't put any fewer than three in a building and any more than eight. There must be twenty feet between each section of buildings. We have looked at some preliminary designs that holds it to about four or five units in one building. So our open space is actually in excess of what is required by the PDT, by the PDD. We have, we have retention ponds, we have open parks, we have sidewalks, we have more open space with the, with the reduction in the density than we did before.
You also say that the joy that traffic will, will be going toward one seventy?
I haven't, I disagree a little bit that all the traffic from this community is gonna go towards Hilton Head. I used to drive the one seventy route every morning when we lived in Buford, and there is a lot of traffic that goes towards Buford. And what I'm seeing and the feedback I'm getting from people interested in the product that's going here, are people who are in the Buford area or the Ridgeland area who are working in the opposite direction and don't want to fight the traffic. They, they don't want to have to come from Buford towards the island if they don't have to, or, or coming off of Bluffton and into Buford. We're seeing a lot more um buyers who are buying more local to where they work. So the commute from Hilton Head to, to Buford, people are trying to find that middle of the road spot. So I've had a lot more interest from people in the um Grace Hill, Buford, St. Helena region that are areas that are working over there and, and wanna maybe move this way a little bit, but not get in the traffic of Bluffton. That's what we're seeing, that's the feedback I've gotten.
Because what I'm looking at here is it just like, an accident happened on ninety-five, everybody hit seventeen coming through a building going to Partyville. If, if accident happened up in that area, who be the road gonna get eaten up?
It does now, yes, I would agree with that.
It, it, it gonna, it gonna get eaten up and, and, and that's gonna be, that's gonna be a death rate that, that happen if, if, if an accident get in that area, because one thing for the EGP, it gonna take them through that road.
I, you know, I, I can't disagree with that. Accidents happen, I sat in traffic for fifty minutes last week going four miles to my office because there was an accident at the bridges going to Hilton Head. So I, I don't disagree that accidents make a mess of things. I, I can't prevent accidents, I'd love to be able to.
Mr. Chair, I, I would like to, um, ask, um, before we do the second meeting, let's, let's, let's cheer with us and, and think a little bit more about this.
Okay, well, let's, I haven't called for a motion yet, but let's, um, make sure to give all the council members an opportunity to ask questions, and we also have a public hearing. And then we will call for a motion to the council, what you want, thank you.
One little thing, boy, I, I want to thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
And it's no reflection on you and your company. But it is a reflection on me, because all the labor to work with the citizens of Jasper County, not to put burden on them. And not to put burden on people that's been here all their lives and everything, and then slap a burden on them, all of a sudden, I'm not here to do that, man. But you, you, you know what you got to do is help y'all, and it's no reflection on you. No reflection on you or our company's representation, but I represent the people.
I, I appreciate that.
Ever put a burden on the citizens of Jasper County.
I, I.
As long as y'all say it, thank you.
Councilwoman Clark, any questions?
No, they haven't said nothing.
Okay.
I do want to make one statement to the council, if, if I can. I understand that this is a very tough position that you're in. But I don't know how many developers come before you and actually are willing to reduce densities and not do what is currently allowed to be done. While development in and of itself is something that not everyone is all lord with, I don't think it's something that we can stop. But I do think we can manage it. And this PDD clause that states in there, if you have an acreage, a piece of property that's more than twenty-five acres, you must apply for a PDD. I think that provision in the code accomplishes exactly what you guys have set out to do here tonight. Without that clause, that property can be developed a million different ways with a whole lot more traffic and density than what the PDD is forcing us to do. And I do, I do appreciate your considering it. Um, I would respectfully ask that you not table it, just because it's been so long for us and we have revised everything we can possibly revise. But I do appreciate the time to stand before you and to, to talk with you about it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kosky. Uh, at this time, we're gonna open the floor for a public hearing. I believe there's one or two spokespersons for the group from the community there. Uh, so at this time, uh, we'll open the floor, public hearing. Uh, I know, I think Mr. Grant McClure, uh, with the Coastal Conservation League. Grant, would you like to lead us off?
Absolutely. And Grant, not to put you on the spot, but I know you're one of the most knowledgeable people, you know, about the zoning and the uses, et cetera, but your opinion is something that, that I value in the council, and I'm sure everyone in here does too, but um, normally I wouldn't ask any questions, but if you have any uh in your three minutes, if you have uh the ability to state about what maybe the lesser of the two equals are, either passing the, the question zoning or leaving it as is. It's gonna get developed, one way or the other, either under the current zoning or the proposed zoning. But if you could maybe explain a little what would be the lesser of the two equals that relates to the impact on the environment, traffic, and safety. Uh, I mean, this, this is a hard decision for all five of us to sit up here when everybody in this room, most of us have grown up together, um, you know, it, it's, it's not an easy decision to sit up here and try to do what's best for everybody, it's, we, we need all the information that we can get to do that.
Yes, sir, um, what I'd like to do is to, to speak to, um, earlier, there was a discussion about parameters, um, and I'd like to maybe provide some of those parameters, um, in my comments, so. So thank you, uh, thank you for the opportunity to comment on the proposed rezoning of two parcels totaling twenty-six point six-three acres along Highway one seventy to allow for the development of the Bailey Park PDD, the one hundred and eighty-seven unit residential development. I'm a project manager with the Coastal Conservation League, a nonprofit advocacy organization working to protect the health of the natural resources of the South Carolina coastal plain and ensure a high quality of life for all the people who live and love this special place. The proposed rezoning is concerning for several reasons. First and foremost, the future land use map from the Jasper Journey, Jasper's Journey Comprehensive Plan designates the twenty-six point six acre property as rural conservation lands. This future land use seeks to promote the character of Jasper County that largely exists today outside of the municipalities. The land use chapter in the comprehensive plan further recommends guiding new development into or around municipalities. Bailey Park lacks proximity to a municipal center. It also empties residential traffic onto Highway one seventy and already overburdened four lane arterial road. There are also environmental challenges inherent to developing the site. Um, it's, it's covered in trees, it's close to the Altima Hot Town Heritage Preserve in the Okeechobee River. And the Okeechobee River is actually currently managed with a TMDL regulation, that's total maximum daily load. And it's, it's a regulation that's in place to slow the decline of the Okeechobee and improve its health in the future. However, I do believe that there are specific measures which can be put in place to limit the negative impact to natural resources, rural character, and community well-being of Jasper County. Um, the first recommendation, I would say, would be the use of conservation subdivision design. Uh, conservation subdivision design is the preferred method for development in rural conservation areas, that's from the comprehensive plan. Um, by cus, by clustering development in strategic locations set back from wetlands and other natural resources, these subdivisions can create more open space, better fit the context of the landscape, and allow for larger buffers and preservation of key features like oaks. Second, I would ask that, uh, before approving this rezoning, you get a commitment from the developer to avoid all impacts to wetlands. Um, these are regulated by the Army Corps and, and the, um, the Tuscaloosa Department of, of Health and Environmental Resources. Um, however, you can always request for a permit to fill them, um, so we, we'd ask for a commitment to not fill them. Um, third, I would recommend incorporating a fifty-foot buffer around all wetlands. And fourth, I would maintain a minimum two-hundred-foot forest buffer along Highway one seventy and Old Bailey's Road. Uh, finally, I would recommend incorporating a mixed-use element, um, such as, um, having, um, a business above, an apartment above your business, that way you'd actually reduce trip generation, uh, folks wouldn't have to leave the community to access their gym or community market. So, uh, in short, I do believe that a rezoning could work. Uh, however, it's very important that you follow these stipulations which I've laid out, thank you.
Grant, if I could, based on the, the current zoning and, and the leeway that the developer has with that versus the PDD, can you give us any indication of, you know, going back, what was the lesser of the two equals? I mean, if we do nothing and vote no, and it stays in the current zoning, I mean, what is your feeling on that?
Yeah, um, I'll, I'll defer to Lisa, I. I, I understand that, I think the lots can be subdivided twice for single families. Is that correct?
Lots can be subdivided twice?
Mm-hmm. If it was all single family?
Under the current zoning.
Or just once?
If you come in with a subdivision that's more than four lots, it's a major subdivision, goes to planning commission, then you do a preliminary plan that shows, if, if you come in to do a subdivision, then you're going to meet the half-acre resident in residential four per acre in community commercial.
All right. So in short, I, I feel that a rezoning could work, but this is just not the, this is not the design that best suits the community. It's, it's not the design that best preserves the rural character of Jasper County. It's not the best design that protects its natural resources. Your comprehensive plan recommends guiding development to the municipalities.
That's not an option in this case, though.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, I, I think a rezoning could work. However, it's important that you follow the, the guidelines of conservation subdivision design, better design to, to better fit the context of the landscape.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have next who would like to speak, yes, ma'am? If you would state your name, please, ma'am, and your Jasper County citizen?
Yes.
Beaufort County citizen?
No, Jasper County citizen.
Yeah, talking to my, thank you.
Good evening, council chair and council members. I am Kathy Decorcey. I'm a resident of Ticton Hall and a committee member of Keep Chelsea Rural. Since the proposed development of Chelsea South and the proposed annexation request for a portion of Chelsea plantation into the town of Ridgeland, we, the committee, have become, have been on heightened alert regarding the upcoming development and growth in our area. We have spent countless hours, my box over there is representative of about 85% of our research material just on Chelsea and the area around in Jasper. We've poured through comprehensive plans, GIS mapping, zoning ordinances, land development regulations, register of deeds records, census data, historical matters, natural resources, infrastructure identification, environmental impacts, wetlands, flood plains, and finally county council and commission agendas and recordings. The comprehensive plan states it should be a serve as a, serve as a go-to resource for all community leaders. Under the executive summary of our vision, it states that the identity of Jasper County is intricately rooted in the beauty and diversity of the natural environment, rich legacy of our history and spirit of our people. The plan also states that Jasper County will protect and foster the rural character of Jasper County that defines our sense of place, along with four other profound statements. In the community survey section, the first question asks, why do you live in Jasper County? The top three answers were family, quality of life, and rural character. After all this research, we've become keenly aware that the developers who seek to expand our community do not care about our land or desires, nor the fact that the county is currently deficient in infrastructure, public safety, and attainable living units to support the impending growth. They don't share our concerns of being good stewards of our precious land that we wish to protect, enjoy, and pass on to further generations. So please explain to us why developers have been given carte blanche access to request zoning changes in PDD designations to achieve their profit goals. Three major developments have been approved by the planning commission that neither match the visions nor the desires of your constituents. Bailey Park is one of them. Next to Bailey Park is an application for Tidewatch, which proposes a subdivision for eights single-family dwellings in which the land is already clear-cut. Other than clear-cut, this development matches the visions and desires. Across the street from Old Bailey Road is another applicant, Cedar Point Apartments seek an approval for a master plan of 327 multifamily units in a storage facility. Just up the road at Snake Road is Chelsea South, currently zoned rural preservation. They're seeking approval of a PDD and zoning change for a development consisting of a 707 mixed-use dwelling units and 3,846 square feet of commercial space. Allow us to remind you.
I'm sorry, but in the essence of time, we.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Ben Kennedy.
Mr. Sauls, how are you all today? Real quick, just a few points to ask. I really want to ask some questions. This is something I do all day long, development and construction, so I'm very familiar with it. You can take a plan and draw multiple different designs to show what you want to do, whether it be 177 units or 40 units. This property is allowed 40 units by right. 1.5 units per acre or either 7.5 units is what's being asked for right now. That was only about a 46-unit reduction from the last time. We still have a lot of opportunity to still do this if they want to do it, but let's get smart about it and make it a conservative approach to development. I'm pro-development, but when you're looking at a two-lane Old Bailey Road and you're looking at taxing the residences of Old Bailey, you could be going out on 270 or 170, but instead, we're going to be dumping all the Old Bailey Road. You're taxing the residents of that neighborhood that are used to a rural area to be in. Our kids can't ride golf carts up and down there when there's that many cars coming out. You can't walk up and down the road safely as a lot of our neighbors do. So we're a little concerned about that. And we need to talk about the possibilities versus what realities are. There's multiple possibilities, but they're throwing out hypotheticals. Let's get down to brass tacks and figure out what's really reality. And just like you said, let's focus on what's truly the request here. Instead of what us as developers do is ask for the most and get you guys to compromise at the middle ground, we need to get it down a little bit more than that. And it is a hazardous location. If you've ever come out of Old Bailey Road and tried to turn left to go to Hilton Head, you have to go across three different lanes. That's pretty dangerous and it's a very hot spot, so be careful for that. Going right is much easier for me. I almost go right, go to Calawassee and turn around and come back sometime just because of how hazardous it is. So let's think about that. And then let's also be concerned about staying rural. I mean, there's parts of the area that we want to keep rural. And don't forget, you have a federally protected waterway that you guys have a fiduciary responsibility to protect as a committee here, to protect the Okati River. Because we don't want runoff in that river, and those ditches will get full and it will overflow. Within 500 feet of this property is the Okati River. So we need to be cautious of that. And so I'm going to yield my time to somebody else just in the essence of time. But please take these things into consideration and, and look a little bit harder at this before you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. George Ward.
George Ward, Beaufort County residence, but concerned about the area due to the property that might erode down.
Mr. Ward, have I pulled that mic down, sir? I need to pull it down to you and talk.
Yeah, you can. One good thing and one bad thing. Bad thing is I've been developing in this area, elsewhere around the southeast, for 35 years. And a letter to serve from particularly Beaufort-Jasper Water Authority is not worth the paper it's printed on. I had suggested to Ms. Wagner at one point that a workshop with the residents, not just a workshop with council. I've done this before in the past. As I said, I've been a developer for a long time. Pardon me. And while it's kind of onerous for the developer for sure, it comes to the best solution. Everybody gets what they want.
Thank you. Mr. Jerry Reeves.
Mr. Chairman, council members, I'm Jerry Reeves. I live at Camp St. Mary's. I live in Beaufort County. But I am greatly affected by what's going on in Jasper County because I live on 170. And, and I am not against development. I am against bad development. I think the density on this, on this property is, is way too much, and I think y'all need to reevaluate that. And I, I think the, the question that, and this is, this is an overall, the question that needs to be asked by Beaufort County, Jasper County, Hardyville, Bluffton, who is going to fix the roads around here? I mean, the people, the people in these counties, we are tired of all the traffic. We just had another fatality on 170 a week and a half ago. I can't tell you how many fatalities we've had at Calawassee. You know, someone, someone has to fix 278 and Argent Boulevard. Somebody has to fix Argent. Somebody has to fix Oldfield and 170. You can't even get out of Oldfield and you've got another development going across the road and there's no light. 170 and 462, that is the worst intersection. And I guess DOT did that or Hardyville did that or, I mean, it's horrible. If you approve this development, who, who is going to put the light at Bailey Road and 170 so you can get out?
SCDOT.
Well, if you go, if you wait on SCDOT to do anything.
Frigging did acquire.
Okay, they're, they have no money. I was on a committee for Beaufort County. We came up with $1.2 billion to fix the roads in this area. And these councils, your council, Bluffton, all of y'all keep approving more and more development. And the roads just can't handle it. The infrastructure. Now, I learned something new tonight. I didn't know that Beaufort-Jasper Water Authority is having a water problem. So somebody has to fix the infrastructures around here. You know, people are getting tired of it. We're paying, we're paying maximum taxes and we're not getting what we're paying for. I think our roads are in crisis. And I disagree with most of the traffic studies that are put before y'all because I think it's to benefit the developer and not the citizens of these counties. That's all I can say.
Thanks, Mr. Reeves. Kristy Smith.
Hi. I didn't come prepared. My name is Kristy Smith. I'm a Jasper County resident. I live off of Broadwood Estates Road. So if you look at the map, I'm like in the little corner, the big U-turn with all the trees. I've been there for 23 years. I raised my children. I moved here to have a quiet neighborhood so my children can play outside and everybody is moving in. We have the new housing development and I'm sure there's some really nice people, but never see them, don't know one person in there. The, the, the concerns that I have is, like the gentleman just said about the traffic. Everybody down there is in a rural neighborhood. They, you know, pretty much mind their own business and do their own thing, but if somebody's got music going, we all dance in the yard, okay? The traffic on Old Bailey with this development is going to spill over. And in my opinion, it's just a matter of time before somebody comes along and takes 50 feet off everybody's front yard or property on Old Bailey's and imminent domain and we have to make it a four-lane. My brother and another family member live with me and they walk these roads. We have neighbors and friends who walk these roads, Old Bailey in particular, with their dog, with their grandkids, elder people. We would really like it to stay rural. I know something's going to go on that property, but it was just a total heartbreak to see all those trees come down and know that our wildlife has been completely misplaced. Homes are gone. I mean, we've got deer running from, from where they used to live. I know, I know this company is going to develop something. I just hope that you guys can figure out the right way to impact us as little as possible. We all are here paying Jasper County taxes and the infrastructure, as someone else already said, needs to be developed, needs to be improved. It's, it's, I'm, I'm on Old Bailey and turning left on 270, uh, 170 quite often. I have a family member in dialysis, so I'm back and forth three days a week. Couple hours in between, three or four. Traffic is horrible. We really don't need to add more to it. And I'm also extremely concerned about the river. So before you make a decision, make sure they are doing absolutely everything they can to keep everybody who's already here safe. And I guess that's all I have to say.
Ms. Ann Cooley. Ms. Ann, how's it going?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
This is going to be quick. I'm here to represent my mother who couldn't be here and my family. We're one of those single-family units on the riverside of Old Bailey's Road. And Old Bailey's Road is as rural as you can get. And I cannot imagine adding, how many cars would be added to 7.5 units? And that 170 is just crazy as we've all demonstrated tonight. But that traffic is going to start filtering through Old Bailey's Road and it's, you know, what are you going to do about it? You know, and I will say this too, the storms that we've had recently, we're concerned about stormwater runoff going into the river, of course. We want to protect that river as, as much as we can. That stormwater, when you get a good rain, those ditches fill up immediately. Our yards are like one big sheet. It's like a lake. So where does the water go? It ends up going fertilizer and all into the river. We don't fertilize personally, but you know, it all goes into the river. And it's, I can't imagine adding, so if you have 7.5 units per acre, how many cars does that add? How many cars do you get per unit? Two, three, four? And the traffic's just crazy. So that's all I have to say. I just hope everybody is thoughtful about this and we would like to keep Old Bailey's Road as sweet as it is now. It's a sweet little road and we love it and it's, we'd like to see it remain the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Erica Gany.
So my name is Erica Bailey Gany and I'm a longtime resident and an adjacent property owner to the proposed Bailey Park PDD. As one of the creators of the over 500 signature petition, signatures of not only residents, but people that have some sort of affiliation with the Old Bailey's Road community, each of y'all should have a copy, but if not, I have one here for you. I am not only speaking for myself, but for the people of my community. First, I would like to ask, who is in favor of this development? Not one person on Old Bailey's Road has had any positive thing to say about it. We do not want this property on our road rezoned into a PDD and we are asking each of you to please vote against it. Another question I would like to ask is why is it our job as the residents of Jasper County to make sacrifices and develop all the land here in the Low Country to accommodate the number of people that are wanting to move here? Our area is beautiful, but the word no needs to be used more often. People can come to visit, but that does not mean they have to stay. We do not want to look like Bluffton. And there are already other developments such as Argent Park that can assist with this growth in the Highway 170 area. Please, once again, we are asking for you to allow this land to be kept at its current rural zoning. Even though the developer has narrowed down on the number of units, the 7.5 units per acre would still allow entirely too many people to move into the community. The current rural zoning of this property is much more welcoming. Our road cannot handle the increase in traffic this development would bring. It is a small, narrow, poorly maintained road. Families wall ride their bikes and golf carts often. However, the current rural zoning would only make for a slight increase in the traffic. Down the road is Okati Park where they kept their rural zoning and the back entrance is closed off on Old Bailey's Road. The Old Bailey's Road community is an old existing community. It is peaceful. It is peaceful and it's quiet for now, which is the main reason so many people reside here. Even the new faces we have met in our community over the past few months, as we have gone around informing our neighbors and asking them to sign the petition, have made it clear that they moved here to get away from the hustle and bustle. Please, we are asking each of you to help our community to be able to keep this characteristic and to stop this land from being rezoned. Okay. And Mr. Fogle, I have a copy of the petition and some of the letters for you. And then I actually have a set for each one of them. Thank you, sir. And that's all. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Debbie Kula would you like to speak?
Just love it.
I think you're the last one.
Okay, I'm Debbie Kula and most of us have spoken to y'all one-on-one. Honestly, we were, we were flattered, gasseded. We were shocked that this even came through the planning committee to this state. And the reason we're shocked is we don't feel like we were represented properly. We requested, excuse me, we requested equal representation times, Ms. Toski, and we were denied. Our letters were on file, but we were referred, our survey that we did that had had almost 600 people, now it's over 600, was referred to, to the planning committee as only an online survey. And out of all those hundreds of people, only 130 people were local. Oh, I beg to differ. Look at the people here tonight. We have knocked on doors, one-on-one, to get signatures. And we're against this for all the reasons that people have already said. Notoriously, Bailey, I should say notoriously, because Bailey's is known for a lot of things, recreation over the years, it has provided commerce, it's provided retail, it's provided employment. It is a rural community. Parcels have been sold off, but it is still a rural community. In the brunt of everything that everyone is saying, the traffic is going to dump into low bottom where, where people live almost on the road. And it is a danger. So I'm, I'm going to leave all of my thoughts that have already been said by members who have already spoken, but I'm reminded of an old adage. The first generation builds it. The second generation nurtures it. The third generation destroys it. And that's what we're looking at. We do not have to be the third and the fourth generation that ruins the rural character of what is left of Jasper County. And one last thing, when you look at the map, Old Bailey's Road, it wasn't Old Bailey's Road always, it was Bailey's Road and it was the division between Jasper and Beaufort. When 170 cut it off, it was cut because of the traffic. If you look on the map, there's a little fingertip left that's in Jasper County, and that is Old Bailey's Road. Look on the map. We encourage you to keep this rural, let Ms. Toski have, have some revenue, let her make a profit, but let's also keep the residential rural character and the water safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Okay. I think that's all the names for our public hearing. At this time, we're going to close the public hearing and I will ask the council to provide a motion in favor of or against the second reading.
Chairman, could I say a word, please?
Yes, you may. Quickly.
I'd like to remind everyone on the council, in front of the citizens of the county, the people of New Haven, here. I think we ought to have a second reading. And we don't on the council, no. I don't know, watch them come and they talk about the traffic problem out of the night. But when we put 22,400 homes in the Argent area of Sun City and the Opity area, and that's why they got 2250 more homes in the Argent II area, they still building homes in the Sun City area, Margaritaville. By the time they get all in, how much more traffic are they going to have before they get the belt made? I'm asking the council, out of council, let them put the burden on the people. It's a real county. We are a leg to keep the burden off the people. And you've got so many people, you've got one of the small group out the belt and they don't understand that, but it's a lot of money, it's a lot of money. But nobody actually went down there and got that group together, had a workshop and said, everybody's invited, let's see what we think about this 26,428 to get the belt. I'm asking you to take a second reading and vote it down or put it out until we see what is going to happen with Argent, Sun City, putting all them homes in there. They talk like they have a 25,000 if you put it down there and they put it out there. Let's see what's going to happen before, before we put another situation anywhere into that area. But that end up being approved.
Any other comments from council members?
No other comments.
Yeah, we, um, we're doing repetitions. We're saying the same thing over and over and over. It's enough. We understand clearly what you say. This young man over here at Councilman's, he said already, tried to put a motion in and the chairman told him to wait so that he won't get tabled until we have the workshop. And I hope when we do have the workshop, we won't keep hearing that we are trying to put the burden on the people because that is not true. We are here listening just like you all are and listening to you all. And these roads, Jasper County has nothing to do with the state roads. Now, I wish we could get about two or three buses and head to Columbia where we need to be about these roads. That's who gets your gas tax money to fix these roads. And, 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 um, somebody said they didn't have the money, that's not true. They had millions of dollars last year that they didn't have a need to use. And why don't you come on the 31st of March, we'll be at the technical Low Country. We'll be there. We have a meeting there every Friday. So this one is going to be on the 31st. The people of Columbia are there. They can answer some of your questions. I invite you, come. It's regional. So we'll know what's going on. And just like the chairman said, something is going to happen. It may not be to our likings unless we sit down and bring it together. And we agree like Ms. Kula said, we can work something out. We can do it. We are educated enough. And I'm not up here by no show or nothing. I'm here to do what's right for the people here in Jasper County. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. We need to move on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Any other comments from council members before we call for a motion? Mr. Kim, Jack, I think you've already had your turn. Okay, at this time, I'm calling for a motion from council.
Make a vote.
To do what?
To have a second reading.
So you're making a motion in favor of a second reading?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right.
We have a motion in favor of approval for the second reading. Do we have a second? Calling for a second twice. I'm calling for a second three times and this will be the final time. If not, then the motion will fail for lack of a second.
Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to make another one, to postpone this and have a workshop with the people. And I have a few questions that, that I have that really might be sort of disgusting here. So I think we need to...
Okay, we have a motion to table until after a workshop with the community and the developer.
With expedience.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Sir.
All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Chairman, can I say a word?
Go ahead, Mr. Rabe, but we've already made the motion.
I know we made the motion, but if we go have a workshop, have all them people in that area.
That's what the motion was. Have everybody there.
If I ever laugh on them, they're going to chill.
Okay. I hope that, uh, before everybody leaves, we'll take a recess, but I, you know, obviously you can tell the, the weight this is on everybody's shoulders sitting behind the podium, it's not easy. We're very sensitive to your concerns, we're sensitive to the roads, we've been dealing with this for years, it's nothing new. Uh, and every development that was mentioned here tonight pretty much is in the city of Hardyville, okay? That's where the growth is, not unincorporated Jasper, which is where we're talking about tonight. That's the city and town of Ridge. But with that being said, um, we're going to take one minute to allow those of you who'd like to leave now to do that, so we'll take a two-minute recess. Ms. Ann, Ms. Ann Copley. Ms. Ann, I want to talk to Jake before he leaves. We're going to call a meeting back in order? Okay, moving on, we are at item 11, public hearing in consideration of the second reading of ordinance 0-023-04 of the County of Jasper, amending the fiscal year 2022/23 budget as originally adopted by ordinance number 2022-17, adopted June 27th of '22 in accordance with the Local Government Code of State of South Carolina and ordinances and rules of the County of Jasper, appropriating the various amounts thereof to provide for the expenditure not to exceed $635,000 from the fund balance for the purchase of a storage array system and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. Ms. Kimberly Burgess will be having a public hearing and this will be second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. Again, this is a second reading for the purchase of the storage array. Council approved, approved the purchase for the storage array some meetings ago and now this is to actually pay for it, how the county will pay for it. And basically it's going to come from the cap, from the fund balance.
Okay. Any questions from council members before we have a public hearing? Hearing none. This time we'll open the fourth of a public hearing for this budget item. Public hearing going once, twice, public hearing is now closed. This time we'll call for a motion, please.
Second.
All right, those in favor, please signify by saying an aye. Aye, thank you. Motion carries. Mr. Danny Lucas, consideration of first reading of an ordinance to authorize Jasper County to enter into a memorandum of understanding lease agreement with the Jasper Ridge Young Baseball, also known as JORYB, for the use of the athletic facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, before you enter ordinance to authorize Jasper County to enter into a memorandum of understanding and lease agreement for the Jasper Ridge Youth Baseball for the use of the athletic facilities. And as you know, the 20-year lease with the same group, lease may expire. The new lease will be for the same acres, 7.97 acres. And we'd like to ask that you approve this first meeting because the Jasper County has prompted from having a recreational program in concert with the Jasper Ridge Youth Baseball incorporated, and they'd like to enter into a new five-year lease this time around. And we're just asking that you approve the first meeting that's settled with us.
Thank you. Any questions, council members? Hearing none, we have a motion for approval? Have a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Next, we have the long-awaited presentation for our Hospital of Coastal Carolina. Next, we have the long-awaited presentation for our Hospital Coastal Carolina from our CEO, Mr. Ryan Lee. Ryan, welcome. Thank you for your patience, appreciate you being here. Clemson grad, Go Tigers. Good evening, Tom.
Yes, sir, Orange Dot.
Jasper County Chamber of Commerce Board Member? Western Presidential?
You better worry about them chickens.
We are on a year of defeat, but football, I mean, and baseball.
Well, only, what, every eight years you gotta give them a full swing play? But we don't need to go there.
Thank you for having me, Chairman Sauls and County Council. My name is Ryan Lee, I'm the CEO of Coastal Carolina Hospital, our hospital located in Hardyville on I-95, and I wanted to come and provide an update of our current state of affairs for the hospital. I am a South Carolina native, I'm from Ekin, South Carolina, and so in April of '22, when I was invited back to join Coastal for my second time as CEO, I couldn't ask for any dream job, to be here in the Low Country and to lead with our colleagues and medical staff, the hospital. We've had a fantastic year as we continue on our commitment to every patient every day. We employ over 500 colleagues right here in Hardyville. We've received high-quality marks, the Joint Commission accredited both Coastal Carolina and our TideWatch Emergency Department with stroke certifications just a month ago, certifying that we are one of the best hospitals in the country for stroke care. And the South Carolina Hospital Association recognized us with Zero Harm Awards in our Surgery Department. We're a busy ER, 40,000 annually, and TideWatch, which we built two years ago on 170, continues to add to that growth, again, our testament to our support in growing our hospital to support the growing community. Our ER performance is well ahead of national benchmarks when we think of how can we get a patient in, treated well, and on their way home, our discharge length of stay is how we refer to that. Our labor and delivery program will celebrate almost 10 years, and we were happy to add a Level 2 NICU to the services in April. Since it's opened, we've serviced over 60 babies that needed critical care at birth, and we were able to keep them right here in Hardyville. And our robotic surgery program, first established in 2015, which makes us one of the longest-tenured robotic surgery programs in the state, continuing to support our patients in general surgery, urology, and GYN. As we look at the growing community, much of what you've heard about tonight, we also look to expand. We received a certificate of need approval to add an additional OR to our surgical suite that allows our surgeons to have better access to the OR and provide more timely care. It also will support the recruitment of additional physicians to our area. As we have a place for surgeons to work, we can bring more in. We're also underway in reviewing what does the next iteration of Coastal look like? While I can't go into details, as we continue to finalize those and have to work through the states for approvals, my commitment to you is it will always look to growth, whether that's physician recruitment, whether it's ancillary service or bed needs. I'm proud to say that we have adequate beds today. Our ER performance continues to be strong, allowing us to support those needs. And our staffing levels are at, almost at a pre-pandemic level. As you'll know, all hospitals have suffered through staffing, and we are, our vacancy rate is one of the lowest in the state of South Carolina, and we're really proud of that. That concludes my remarks, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council members have asked questions, Mr. Lee? Thank you.
Yeah, I got a question I wanna ask. It's a tough one. You say y'all get your patient here and treat them and get them on their way. I'm gonna ask this question because I know everybody's looking, some people might get upset, but I'm asking this question. I thought when people come in the hospital, if they're in an accident, people would get examined, hand and foot. A gentleman went down there and he came to me, the only thing I could see was a wob. Got ran in the back down there, points out on 17, and my ass took him to Coastal. He told him that it was neck and his shoulder. He called himself to check him and tell him to go home and take a couple of towels off. He went home, pants kept even, while he took it down Buford, he done an X-ray and found it was a carbone. So how did he get this a look? You know, it's something for us to think about. You know, if somebody get in an accident, you need to take a X-ray. If you come in my facility and you tell me your neck and shoulder, you know, I'm not gonna tell you to take a couple of towels off, you'll be all right. You know, left there, wife and you came back to Coastal, came to Buford, carbone broke. So I just ask that question.
Yeah, Chairman Atkins, I'm happy to talk to you afterwards and get specific patient information, and I'm happy to review that. We certainly medically screen and treat all patients that enter the hospital and through our emergency department, and I can't speak to the specifics, but I'd be happy to.
I just wanted to ask that.
Be happy to look at that so we can continue to get better.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just have one question.
Thank you.
Do you ever have to show the matrix of putting another emergency situation like on 170, maybe up in Ridgefield or for that?
We're always evaluating what opportunities we have for investment into our community. I can't speak to the specifics.
I understand, I just wanna make sure that it's in your mind.
Yes, sir.
I plan to succeed hopefully.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Council members, any questions? Thank you. I would like to also recognize Dr. Anderson, who's also on the Coastal Carolina Board of Directors as well, and has been on there for a couple of years now too. She's with us tonight, and actually she'll be speaking next on the school district. But, Mr. Lee, thank you for being with us, keep doing a good job, we appreciate your commitment to health care, and Coastal Carolina is certainly a vital part of our community, it's the only hospital we have in Jasper County, and obviously we all support it and we do our part, so thank you for what you do.
Yes, thank you very much, thanks for having me.
Yes, sir. All right, next we're gonna have Dr. Anderson for an update on the Jasper County School District. Welcome, Dr. Anderson.
How's everyone?
Good.
Awesome, awesome, and it was so good to certainly hear from CEO Ryan. They do do a great job, and some folks on that board actually, and we get the word that is certainly happening. So we do take some of those comments back, Councilman Atkins, and we certainly will follow up as we need. Good evening to everyone, good evening, good evening, good evening. It is certainly a pleasure to be able to share with you on this evening, a brief update. Again, protocol has been established, it is always a pleasure to talk about Jasper County School District. You have a presentation there in front of you, I will follow that, and try not to keep you long at all. Won't read verbatim to you, certainly you, I'm at your fingertips, but I'm available should you need me. But do I want to certainly say, and you can go to the next slide. Thank you. That our purpose on tonight, when I started here in 2018, my purpose really was to make sure that we reestablish again our relationship with county council, to make certain that we were open, that we were collaborative, that we were goal-oriented, and that we were good neighbors, number one. And so, we've come to you, we've kept you abreast of where we are, what we have going on, and just to continue to give you an update as to our school system, our public school system, which is a very important part of this community. Our district mantra is student-centered future focus, and without saying anything more, that is indeed what we do. We focus on our young people, we wanna make certain that what we do is prepare them not only for where they are currently, but also for the future. Tonight in our agenda, we will talk and look at introduction of a few staff members, just so that you know who they are, our student enrollment, you can go to the next slide, our student enrollment, career readiness, our staff, our financial stability, which is a very important part, as you are our fiscal age, and we make sure that our campus safety is a part of this presentation as well, opportunities, some people call them challenges, we call them opportunities. And the county council staff will say some things about those individuals and some announcements. The next slide there, next, you can go on, please. You'll see individuals that make up, again, the makeup of what we do with stores administration and who those individuals are, won't read those things. I do wanna pause just to say that we acknowledge that we do have three of our board members here with us on this evening, we have Miss Stacy Mitchell, we have Mrs. Priscilla Frazier, and Mr. Ted Moy. I do know that there are some others that are listening via your live broadcast, and we want to certainly send a shout-out to those individuals as well. Again, those are a few of our district leaders, we are very happy to have those individuals. Much of the work that we do certainly depends upon the planning that we have that we can move forward together and the conversations that we have, but also following again what it is and what's best for young people, how we do those things, both operational, both financially, as well as instructionally. Our introduction of our school leaders, the next slide, you'll see those individuals there as well, great group of individuals, we're very happy to have those young people leading us and certainly working within our community to move our schools and our district forward, along with our teaching staff as well as the paraprofessionals. When we look at our Jasper County School District, next slide, please, thank you. Our student enrollment and our demographics, one of the things that we certainly see that currently right now, we have roughly 2,763 students, okay? So we have really improved in our enrollment, I think previously when I come to you before, we were under, right under 2,700, and then so we fluctuate a great deal. You'll see there the enrollment based on female, based on male, you will also see broken down by gender as well. What you will also see is that we are seeing a change in our demographics. You will know that of those 2,763 students, 46% of them are Hispanic, 45% are African-American, 6% are Caucasian, and 3% are other. So we have now more Hispanic students at this point in time, and we're really growing, and we're seeing a very large trend of individuals across our school, and you'll see those schools listed there that actually denote those individuals who are Hispanic. What does that mean for the school system? We have to change the order of business as well. For those individuals who are coming in as newcomers, but also for those of us who are here that may not be multilingual, we also have to make sure that we are addressing that as well. And I'll talk a little brief as we go through the presentation about where we are as a county and how we can help each other. Career readiness, opportunities, our students have the opportunity to participate in career readiness at two facilities. We were blessed to certainly create our own KATE facility on-site, many of you, some of you were at the groundbreaking for that. Those are the programs, and I should say the course offerings that we certainly offer for our students there. What we have is that we try not to duplicate what we offer at Buford Jasper Ace, with the exception of Health Science, which is a very, very lucrative but most called-for and needed, definitely, program. And so, that will be one that you will see that is there consistently. Moving on, you'll see that we offer again Buford Jasper Ace, and what our students have the opportunity of certainly participating in there as well, and again, Health Science is that repeat again. Staff, how many staff members do we have? We employ roughly 364 staff members, of that 190 are certified, the others are 174 are our classified staff members, bus transportation staff, they are also in that number. Makeup of that is about three administrators there, 16 bus drivers currently for bus aides, trainings in progress, we have four, and our base starting rate of pay is $17.12 with zero years of experience, and our drivers are guaranteed six hours. When we look at the financial stability of Jasper County School District, we're in excellent shape, to be exact. We look at our general fund revenues, our general fund expenditures, as well as the total for all of our funds. We just completed our audit, we are in good financial standing, and we did have an issue of definitely an unmodified opinion, which is the best that you can certainly have. You'll see there the general fund expenditures, in 2022, we expended $33.9 million. You'll see there the makeup of that, $19.7 million in property taxes, $890,000 in other local revenues, and $13.4 million in state revenues. Our general fund revenues, we've expended there, or brought in I should say, 30 million of that, $13.6 million in instruction, $14.4 in support services, $1.2 million in intergovernmental and capital improvement outlays, $1.7, and $6,400 in our debt service. The total of all of our funds, again, includes our general, our special revenue, including our pupil activity funds, as well as EIA, food service, and EIA definitely consists of those things that we have that support, again, our students that are bilingual coming through, and debt service as well as our capital projects. Our revenues and net source, $58.5 million, our expenditures, $60.5. There was a single audit that was conducted on two areas, USDA, as well as the ESTRA funds, which is a great, great deal of money that we certainly do deal with, and that is certainly, as you well know, won't be there forever, but we will be expending that accordingly as the guidelines certainly do indicate. And those two audits, there were no program findings, so we're very excited about that and the work that, again, we were able to accomplish. As it comes to campus safety, when we look at the Hardyville Elementary School campus, or I should say the Hardyville Campus, which is the K-12 campus, we currently have added to our schools, and you'll see that there, we've added definitely what we call a monitoring system to certainly vet our individuals coming through. We use a Garrett metal detector, and all visitors are verified, they're signed in. We have one SRO at the elementary school, we have two at our Hardyville Junior Senior High School. We've requested an additional officer for our middle school through the state grant, and we certainly look to hear from that as soon as that information is released. It is the same, that is on the Ridgefield K-12 campus, you can continue, please, on the Ridgefield K-12 campus, you will also see there that we have the same, one of the difference there is we do have a KATE officer at our KATE facility that's in addition for this coming year, as well as two at our Ridgefield Secondary Academy of Excellence, and our J-CAP officer, who's actually here, Sergeant Ashby, who does our J-CAP as well, and our SRO for the REES. I certainly commend our SROs for what they certainly do bring to our campus and the safety that we are able to heighten. We also have cameras, we see a good bit, some things we don't wanna see, but we certainly can certainly see them. Our campus safety on both campuses, we do also have, as I said, the metal detectors, but we also have bag scanners. So our book bags go through a scanner daily, and that has certainly helped us certainly curtail some of the things that were brought on campus, and so we are very excited about that as well. When we look at, again, individuals running those, they are trained, and we certainly do have two points there that are certainly on-site for students entering those campuses. We do have some new additions, we have what, I think you can go to the next slide there. You can't move, okay. We do have, my board did approve for, and we have, I call them some great cars to play with, but we don't get to play with them, we certainly purchased those as a district, but our SROs use those, and those right now are certainly being used to get across and limit the time that we are moving across the campus. And so, if there is an emergency that we certainly do need to move very quickly in our car, they can't get into their cruisers, then they certainly are able to certainly utilize these cars here to make sure that we can get across our campuses very quickly. And so, those are out right now, being striped, and they have blue lights being placed on them, et cetera, so that you certainly will know that they are coming. Opportunities, again, some of them call these challenges, but these are opportunities for us as a district as we move forward. Academic data is certainly an area of improvement. When I arrived in 2018, we had two schools that were on the priority list with the State Department. We currently have, we moved those two schools the very first year off of that list, COVID happened. We had a momentum going, we're picking that momentum back up, and we are looking to certainly continue our area of improvement academically. It will take certainly all of us certainly working together. We realize with all of the economic development that is certainly in the area, it is certainly one of the things that I know that developers look to see exactly how to sell homes, et cetera, how to bring industry in, et cetera, and we realize that the public school system is charged. how to bring industry in, et cetera, and we realize that the public school system is charged to make certain that we are moving things forward and that those things are certainly happening. And that economic development can certainly continue. And so that is an area that we're working on, looking to make some improvements there. It may not be as fast as we wanted, but we will certainly yield some type of, again, improvement there as we move forward. As I indicated initially, we talk about our demographics and our resources. As a county council, we are asking, and I am asking, to sit down with you as you are looking at your plan of action, as you are looking to afford resources to certain areas, we are going to have to address the change in our community. Because the community, we are just a cogent part of that as we look at our schools, et cetera. And so what we see happening in our schools is something that's happening in our communities. And so we do need to make sure that we are affording resources in the right area so that we can certainly help those individuals that we are charged, to number one, work with as families, but also as students that we educate. Go back if you will. Early learning academies, and I appreciate you working it for me. Thank you. Our early learning academies, that was something, you know, I continuously, and I've said this to our board, and I will continue to say it, until we, again, bring our students in performing on grade level, okay, on grade level, we will always struggle as a district. Because we'll put a Band-Aid on for some time, and then you'll have to address it again. And that's what we're seeing. It is a very difficult charge when we get young people in ninth grade who are reading on a second or third grade level, but we pass them on. It doesn't benefit the child, nor does it benefit the community, nor does it benefit, again, the lifelong of what we want our young people to be able to do. And that is to be productive citizens in our county so that they can make a living for themselves, but also to care for individuals who will eventually, all of us, if the good Lord allow us to stay here, will grow old, and these young people will have to care for us. And so we want to make sure that the product that we certainly yield from Jasper County School District is one that we can be proud of, number one, but it is one that will give back value to our community as well. And so when I say that we need early learning academies, it's not just something to want. It is a need because over 70% of our students enter either pre-K, not ready, or kindergarten, not ready. And some will sit out there, Anderson, what do you mean they're not ready? They know their colors, okay? They understand how to skip, hop, jump, okay? They read in front of me. But comprehension is a part of understanding. And so one of the things that we have to do is to make sure that we are educating our young people in all regard, and that means the whole child, the entire child. And so a part of what we would like to do, and we will certainly be continuing that planning as we move forward with the board, is to look at, how do we develop that? What does that look like for our communities, and how will we move forward with that? Because until we send our students, again, to middle school performing on grade level, the middle school will always struggle. Until we send our students from middle school to high school performing on grade level, the high school will always struggle. If we graduate young people who are not graduating where they need to be at the top of their class, they will always struggle when they leave, and that is an unfair statement. And I should say something to give our young people. They should know that as educators, we are here to give them the best. And if the best, again, is what we want for all of our children, then the best is what we ought to give them. And that will charge all of us, myself, our board, our community, but also you as a council working with us. Because our actions speak louder than our words. Teacher and staff housing, heard a lot about housing, okay? Great problem to have. But we have individuals who are commuting a great distance. Right now, we give a Myra stipend based on, again, the miles that you do travel. That is to help with, again, recruitment, as well as retention. Those funds run out because that's something that's in our ESTRA plan, okay? And so we have individuals who are here because they cannot afford to live in the apartments. So some of them are living in hotels. Some of them are commuting because it's cheaper to commute from Pooleer because of the cost, et cetera. Some of them live on the outskirts because it's cheaper. And we have individuals who live as far as Orangeburg that come in daily because it's cheaper, okay? And so we have to address teacher and staff housing, and it's not just for teachers. We know our local law enforcement, they need housing, okay? Based on where they are and what they make. Economically, this may not have been a problem some time ago. It is certainly an issue that we're dealing with now. And so at the end of the day, I know that, I sit on the Sanoco Board, and I certainly do know that, you know, affordable housing, we call it attainable housing, is being discussed. But at some point in time, we are going to have to address the need for individuals. And, you know, I heard the comments made, but at the end of the day, we will have to do something to afford individuals a fair living, number one, by what we afford them, but also a safe place to live. Acquiring land, there are, and it was said tonight, a lot of development happening in Hardyville. I know, school district has spent a lot of time with exit three, the tip, okay? Lot of time, Councilman Saltz is laughing, he understands, lots of time there. One other thing that I will say is that there are already approved 20,000 single homes, family dwellments, that are happening. Jasper County School District will need to address a K-12 facility. We can sit and say, oh, we don't need that, you're not, you know, fully, you know, your capacity, Dr. Anderson, at your other facilities are not where they need to be. We beg to differ, we beg to differ, and we'd love to have a conversation with you. However, the one thing that we have to keep in mind is that traveling back and forth, when you talk about buses trying to get to roads that may not be able to turn those buses around, and Councilman Anderson, you know what I'm referring to, it's difficult. We talk about rain, moving buses, and so it's something that we need to look at when we talk about community schools. There's a reason for that because it's the lack of time that kids are on buses. Just the other day, our buses with their houses popping up and people living lots of places. But we're literally going to the Savannah Bridge almost, picking up young people, bringing them back to Hardyville. It heightens the travel time, number one, of children on buses. But the other part of that is, if you think it's traffic for your car, think about the long yellow school bus and how we can maneuver and not maneuver. When it's an accident, however, our kids are stuck at school because we can't get, we can't go anywhere, literally. And so that's a part of something that we have to address, and we need to, and it's something that, and I guess my grandmother would say, and everybody knows I love my grandmother, Grandma's not here, but Grandma would say, Rochelle, whatever you deposit now, you can withdraw later. And so at some point, we have to deposit something in order to get something from it. And there will be a change in our dynamics, it will be. Because there are things that we are faced with now that we didn't have to face a few years ago. So no, even when I was in school, okay? There are things that I didn't have to encounter as a student that our young people are encountering now. And so we have to change our mindset, again, to effect the positive change that I do believe we all want. How we get there and be successful will be up to us, will be up to us. And so, yes, is Dr. Anderson saying, we need to? Yes, we will be talking about that. Am I saying that will happen tomorrow? I'm not, but what I am saying is that there are 20,000 houses already approved in Hardyville. Young people have to be educated. And so there is a need for us to begin to talk about what that looks like. I do want to commend Mr. Fulgum and his team. When we talk about teacher and staff housing, we've sat, we've talked about that, and we will continue our conversation in regards to that. So I do know that the county is definitely supportive of that, and I do know that Mr. Fulgum is working with us on that. And so we'll continue that conversation because that's a charge, I believe, that we have, number one, for young people, but also for staff members, okay? Not going to belabor the point you've seen, if you haven't seen our STEM bus, we're very proud of it. Again, you have to stop by when it's on either the Richland Campus or the Hardyville Campus. There's something happening every day with the STEM bus, and it's very exciting. We literally are making sure that our young people have hands-on instruction, but they also are understanding what it is to take science from the classroom to a different level. We're looking to bring or take our bus actually to and out in our community forthcoming, and so that schedule will be coming out as we are approaching our summer months so that, again, we can continue to educate our young people as needed. I won't forlong the next slide, it pretty much just identifies what I just said. You'll see our early learning and literacy there, our numbers at our Hardyville and Richland campuses. Again, the continuum of education must not stop with our early learners, but it must continue. And we have a charge to make sure that we're sending our young people ready whenever they enter and whenever they leave. We are very pleased as we are making changes through our programs that we offer. Our language immersion program was piloted this year in Hardyville, and we are looking to certainly take that immersion program, language immersion program to Richland for the upcoming school year. Very successful in Hardyville, we're very proud of that. Our students are 50/50, they're receiving instruction in English, as well as in Spanish, et cetera, in ELA and math, and they're doing a fabulous job. Stop by, we're happy to share that with you, and they are happy to speak to you in both of their languages. Dual enrollment, we're very proud of dual enrollment as well. We have certainly spent a lot of time there with TCL, the Technical College of the Low Country, as well as USCB. We definitely want to make sure that our young people are ready. This is free to our students, free. And I say to parents who are listening and those who are in the community, this is one thing that we should certainly make sure that our young people are taking advantage of. If you can enter college free while you're in high school, already a sophomore, to me, it's a nirvana, take advantage of it. Because it's an education tool that, again, allows you to be where you need to be. Currently, right now, we have, again, the TCL, you can go to the next one, please, with TCL. And the next one, I'm sorry, sweetheart, thank you. TCL uses the South Carolina Lottery to fund where they are, as well as their ESTRA grant, as well. And if we send anyone to USCB, we do pay for that from JCSD for their books, tuition, et cetera. So again, it costs our students nothing. It costs our students nothing. We are very pleased to announce that, next slide, please, that we did have six students that graduated this spring of last year that earned certificates. And those individuals are, I saw two of them at South Carolina State. I went to a game just to check in on them, and they are doing quite well. And so we are very excited to see them moving along. But they are, again, sophomores in their class, and so that's a great thing for them to move forward. We are projecting 15 students to receive certificates, as well as five students who are projected to graduate with associate degrees. Again, it is a plus for them, and it is definitely an opportunity for them to, again, acquire what they need to acquire. Announcements, I won't read those to you, but want you to be a part of what we do have going on in our school system. Read those at your leisure. Again, you'll see our public hearings there, you'll see our board work sessions, you'll see our board meetings. You'll also see graduation dates, you'll see what we have going on as for as individuals, things at our schools, kindergarten ceremonies, the K-5, you know, the fifth grade ceremony, et cetera. Those are all, they're listed for you, and if those will change, we will certainly update those on our website so that you certainly can keep in mind. I want to commend, again, the council. Most of the time when I work with Mr. Fulgum, I work with Williams and Simmons, et cetera. And it's nothing that I can't call for if I need something. If I drop by, when they could be busy, they stop just to make sure that it is something that is needed. They do accommodate us. And so I appreciate that, certainly want to publicly thank each of you for the work that you do, and to publicly say, we appreciate you in Jasper County School District because there's so much more than you could be doing. And I understand the hits and things that certainly come at you consistently. But do know that in your work, we do appreciate all that you do, and please know that we are here if you ever need us to certainly support you in your endeavors. Thank you, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I want to tell you that we appreciate you especially. You have done a phenomenal job since coming to here as our superintendent. We appreciate you, your board, your staff, everybody at the Jasper County School District. Phenomenal job, it's a challenge every day, and you guys meet it head on. So we'd like to support you, we're happy to be able to. So don't think that the job y'all do goes unnoticed because we all see it and recognize it. Just want to say thank you first and foremost. Any council member have any comment or questions for?
I'll ask you a question, Chris. How did the job kind of school system rate with your other schools in the state for the academic?
As I said, Councilman Garbey, that is a challenge for us. When we talk about rating, so you and I, I would love to sit and talk with you, but let me just say, when you rate us, we would need to compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges, okay? Because it is unfair to rate us with a system that, let's say Buford, 27,000 students. Let's say Jasper, 2,700, okay? I can promise you the same demographics of my schools, if I go over to Buford, those same, the same schools, same different demographics are rated the same as we are. The only difference is they have more schools than we do mathematically. You can hide those. The difference in Jasper, we can't hide them. So we don't have an opportunity to not make it. So when you asked me that question, I want to sit down with you and look at numbers. I want to sit down with you and look at schools. I want to sit down with you and look at the student population and makeup, okay? Because it's difficult to talk about how we rate with all the schools. Now, that information is available online with the State Department, okay? You can certainly see that. But currently, right now, we are performing in the bottom 5% on our data. But that is one dataset, one dataset. And so I'll challenge anyone, any day, to come and see what our students do, and don't just judge us on a test, one test. Because one test never, never tell all the work that we do and what we do for our young people and what our young people go through. But I'm happy to meet with you and talk about that.
I have one request. Did you send this, your agenda to Wanda?
Wanda has my agenda.
Send it out to us?
Wanda has my, Wanda has my agenda or the PowerPoint?
No, the agenda, every month you have a meeting.
Oh, sure.
I just remember, if I do remember, it's gone.
Oh, sure, sure. And if I forget, Councilwoman, but I'll certainly let Mrs. Wright do that. I don't send agendas out other than to our board to make sure they receive them. But I'll certainly make sure that the agendas will come to you and I'll let Mrs. Wright know that, not a problem.
And thank you very much for being here.
You're quite welcome. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, we have public comment. I do know there are some people here to speak on the Gillisobill project, which is not on our agenda, but you certainly have that right to speak on that. And right now, we'll open the floor to the public, and we have Mr. Freddie Bradley on the Gillisobill project. Grant, welcome.
In the council.
Good evening.
There's a concern about, Freddie, let me say first, I was surprised that the planning board approved this proposal. Because only would you can make an intelligent decision if you get the right information. The only way you can make an intelligent decision. Apparently, they didn't have the information they needed. And we want to supply this, the council with the information you need to make the right decision for our community. Mr. Farmers is not interested in a recreational park. He interested, he's one of the third largest developers. He interested in digging. He interested in digging, creating what I consider, create another sand pit. We got one sand pit in Jasper County already. We don't need another. And that's what he probably want to bring into our community. But the hauling the dirt out for that, because even the point there, much as a, a, a recreational pool, you don't, you don't go no 20 feet deep for a pond, for a pond. So he's not interested, so he want, he want him, he's invested. So what he gonna have trucks running up and, we just, as you know, I'm a member of the transportation board. We just repair, had money to prepare in-house years ago for 62. Now you're gonna have those trucks, big trucks running up and down 62 for the next few years and gonna tear up the road again for that our community. And besides, what he want to do is, they're not gonna enhance our community, but they, they, they destroy it. Because who gonna be willing to build any nice homes around a park, a, a, a place look like what he gonna leave when he finished drilling it? And that's why he need to, need you to change the zone where you have, because you got drill. He's not gonna do no recreational park. He gonna be drilling, hauling dirt out of there for the next three or four years or more. So that's, we, so we submit to the, to the council the information that you need to know, that we don't want him to destroy our community. On that, we would ask our custody to disapprove his request to change the zone of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Don Newton.
Good evening, Don Newton, Gillisenville Community. I lived in Savannah, but I was born in Gillisenville and I'm speaking for the Gillisenville community tonight. I have two things for you. One, a statement, and second is a request. The statement first, let me read it to you. The community disagrees with item one of the proposed ordinance that designate partial A, tax, tax map 0500004011 for resource extraction. Based on our findings, this designation is not consistent with and in harmony with the Jasper County Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, the community, and here's the request, we request that a workshop be scheduled. We did meet with Mr. Farmer, we did not have a meeting of the mind. And so we're requesting that we schedule a workshop. We did put together our, some of our findings and we sent it to you. I don't know if you got your copies yet, no? But of some of the things that, that, that needs to be discussed in the workshop. So once again, we would like to schedule a workshop. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you and God bless you.
Next we have Stephen Schmidt.
Good evening, council. My name is Stephen Schmidt. I'm the president of the Ridgeland Aviation Community Association or RACA. And for three minutes here, we're going to talk about the airport. Last Tuesday, February 28th, I and two RACA officers were summoned to appear before the Jasper County Legislative Delegation at State Representative Newton's office in Columbia, South Carolina. The main issue was whether or not section 4-9-170 of the Home Rule Act of 1976 supported Jasper County's claim that ordinance 19-14 that quote, "A point of powers to the county aeronautics commission were devolved to the county." The legislators expedited a request for an opinion from the Attorney General and that opinion was delivered the next day. The AG's opinion was expressed by reference to a previous AG opinion, number 85-36, published on April 11th, 1985, regarding a nearly identical situation with Greenville City, Greenville Council and the Greenville Airport Commission. A commission that like ours was established a long time ago in 1928 by state law. The AG's opinion had three conclusions. The airport commission may be considered a special purpose district or political subdivision and neither a city or a county has the authority to alter the structure of that commission. We can find no authority in the Home Rule Act for a city or county to modify the commission by ordinance or otherwise, even if the commission is not a special purpose district or political subdivision. There is no other provision of law that would permit a city or a county to delegate a point of power once that power has been delegated by the General Assembly. And here's what that means. Jasper County Council cannot pretend it does not know that its attempt to devolve the Jasper County Aeronautics Commission to the county has no basis in law. Therefore, any actions taken by the county predicated on ordinance 19-14 may actually be considered an act of fraud. The proposed ordinance 20- or 2023-02, which was going to get its second reading today, is actually dead because it's untethered to the law. Furthermore, Jasper County Aeronautics Commission survives the county's attempt to devolve it. The commission is intact and in good legal standing, albeit it needs the governor to appoint members. The Jasper County Aeronautics Commission is independent of Jasper County Council. Section four of the act that created the commission is titled Maintenance, Operation and Control of the Airport, and the state appointed those duties to the commission, not the county. The commission may exercise those duties by cooperating with the county to run the airport. Here are the deeds for the property that the commission owns out of the airport, 76 acres, okay? This land will not be transferred to the county. Forty of the 42 hangars on the airport are situated on aeronautics commission land, therefore their ground leases will be granted by the commission, not the county. The legislative delegation will soon nominate three Jasper County residents to the governor for appointment to the commission. The aeronautics commission will meet, choose its chair and begin the process of granting long-term ground leases to each of the 40 hangar owners. The aeronautics commission does not need the county's authorization to do any of these things. Now there's a hard way forward and I don't have time to go into it, but it includes lawyers and courts, circuit court, you know, we can go get an opinion from the Supreme Court on the law and we can get the legislative delegation more involved. We can actually get the Attorney General and the Governor involved if we want to go that way. But here's the easy way forward. Jasper County needs to repeal ordinance 19-14. Jasper County needs to drop ordinance 2023-02. No publicity, no court drama. Jasper County needs to accept that the aeronautics commission is a landowner. Ground lease payments will be, will continue to be sent to the airport account to pay for airport expenses. We don't have to worry about the money issue. Jasper County Aeronautics Commission and Jasper County should work together to craft an agreement for joint maintenance, operation and control of the airport. The council then gets to focus on more important things, which we've spent all night talking about, way more important than hangars. And then the pilots and mechanics and hangar owners are happy and we get to start bragging about the airport again.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Okay. Longset of Wharton?
I decline.
Good evening, to the chairman and to the other councilmen. This is a different situation. I've checked, I lived at, I'm living at 426 Roche Island Roman in Ridgefield, I was born and raised in Ridgefield, and I'm having water problem. I've checked with the county, I've checked with the state and they are saying they can't do anything. The water is not stopped up there, but it's just a nuisance. If I, no matter what I do to my home, it's, it's just messy. I have some pictures and I'm, I'm here soliciting your help to see, to tell me what to do, where to go, because I've tried and I haven't gotten any result. So I'm appearing to see if you can.
Ms. Washington, if you will, you can give that to our administrator and he will look over it and get back with you on what possible assistance, if any, that, you know, we can do to try to help you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, I think that's everybody. And at this time, we're moved to administrator's report.
I thought I signed in.
Oh, well, there's so many names on here, I may have missed it. Come on up and just tell us your name and, and we'll give you three minutes like everybody else.
I appreciate that, sir.
Yeah, absolutely. Could have been oversight on my part with that.
All right. I think you want to hear what I have to say, so I appreciate you, Mike, I appreciate you giving me this time.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Gaston, I am a resident of Jasper County and I'm the Jasper County Council's representative to the newly named Buford Jasper Housing Trust Board. And that board was established to address some of the affordable housing challenges in the region. And for those who don't know, the eight jurisdictions that fund the trust are Jasper County, the city of Bluffton, Buford County, Hardyville, Fort Rol, Yamasee, Buford and Hilton Head. What I wanted to make this county, this body aware of are the things that have been, that have been happening over the last 90 days since the trust has been fully funded and since it's established a board. As I've said, the name is Jasper, Buford Jasper Housing Trust. We have sent our representatives out to interview the eight jurisdictions that are involved in the initiative to find out what the housing priorities are across the region. We've also met with developers to find out what projects are in the pipeline that might qualify for affordable housing. There's about $2 million that's been provided by those eight jurisdictions. Senator Tom Davis has introduced legislation at the state level to provide a one-time earmark of $5 million as an infusion of funds in order to address some of the housing needs also. He's proposed that the hospitality tax and accommodations tax use, or he's proposing some of the funds from those taxes to use as a one-time infusion of funds and then he's exploring ways to actually have money for the affordable housing initiative be built into the state's budget on an annual basis. He met with our group last week, he feels pretty strongly that this bill will pass. So we're watching the legislation just to see where we are with that. We organize as a board, we have our committees, we develop our criteria to review the projects as they come forward to us for funding consideration. I, as your representative, have been named as the secretary slash treasurer of the board. I'm also the finance committee person, so all of the, before any funding is actually issued for the project, they will cross through my committee for recommendations. So that, so I will make sure that Jasper County's needs are addressed as the projects are being reviewed. We have developed our selection and funding criteria and we also have a target date to have our RFP out to interested parties by the end of March. So we are on the move. I'll come forward through my committee for recommendations. So that, any given particular period of time so that you'll know pretty much where we are. Any questions for me? And thank you so much for your time.
Well, I want to thank you for volunteering to serve and it sounds like you've got a big responsibility there and we appreciate what you're doing to help us because that's certainly a necessity and a need, one that we need to put all of our effort behind to facilitate. And we appreciate you serving and thank you for, for what you're doing.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Okay, administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I'll keep it brief for you. My report had five items on it for information. There are two that I'd like to just report out to you on. One is the capital projects update. We've talked about it here before on several occasions, but our transition from design mid-build to construction manager at risk as the delivery method is ongoing and we have a number of capital projects that you've approved for pre-construction moving through the channels and some of those will be popping back up to you here soon. As part of this, we've had a good opportunity to work with MBCon and work on some potential reports for you. So what we intend to do is to have a monthly report for you that'll have everything from, from Gantt charts on the projects to a narrative report and of course, progress photos of all the projects. So you'll, you'll be able to monitor those in real time and then, as we've talked about before at your retreat, you'll be able to review them and talk about projects and talk about policy decisions to move forward or not with others. But having said that, I'll just move through a couple of the active projects now and where they stand. You have about $8.3 million worth of CIP projects and facilities moving forward. You have the airport improvements, the apron project, the farmer's market renovation, coroner's office renovation and the Pratt Memorial Library renovation. And where those stand are the division clothing airport expansion, the planning, budgeting is complete, it was added in fiscal year 2023 to your report, the design is complete, pre-construction is complete and the construction began about February the 20th and it's ongoing. The coroner's office renovation has started, we're anticipating 30 to 45 days before that's concluded. Farmer's produce market renovations, the planning, budgeting is complete, the design is complete, pre-construction is ongoing, construction has not yet begun and we intend to have an action item, I think, coming back to you, the guaranteed maximum price from MBCon at your March 20th meeting, your next meeting. The Pratt Memorial Library renovations, the planning and budgeting is complete for 2023, the design is ongoing, pre-construction is ongoing with MBCon. There is talk, Mr. Lucas is working with the library board and the library staff about temporary location, storage of documents and the like. Those will be outside the current capital budget, so we'll have to come back and talk to you about those items. And then under the consent agenda this evening, you have the architectural services contract for your consideration. Fifth potential project we wanted to mention because we know there's been some talk about it is in Cusahatchie, both the fire station and community center. We've asked MBCon to look at those. They have already looked at the fire station and the community center, but we asked them to take another look and come up with some options for you. And we look forward to being able to discuss those with you at your retreat so we can try to get a policy direction from you about how you would like to proceed there. The other item I had to report on was Jasper County Neighbors United having a new event this year, which will be an annual event, and they are requesting your consideration of sponsorship, but I'm very lucky, still lucky, to have Mr. Moore in the audience. Yeah, the executive director for Jasper County Neighbors United. So I'll conclude my report by turning it over to Mr. Moore, who can tell you a little bit more about the function and about your sponsorship opportunities.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Fulgham, before Ted, when Ted starts, I've got some questions too, but when the preliminary design is done on the library as well as what's going to happen at the farmer's market, we have an opportunity to view that and look over it when those designs and recommendations are available.
Yes, you certainly will with the library, okay? And the farmer's market, I think I mentioned the last thing is they have to come back for GMP approval, total GMP approval, I think at your next meeting.
That's fine, yeah.
You're coming back, both of those will come back.
See you in a minute. Okay. In the last, in the last budget, we put in, I think, $20,000 for the septic down in Levee. Could you, next time, give us an idea of whether that's going to happen?
I'm sorry, which project?
The septic down in Levee.
Okay, I don't.
The septic was not doing well?
Sure, I think that we can pull that into your conversation at your retreat if you in fact do that towards the end of March, I think that'd be perfectly appropriate. We talked about all those items.
We did the budget, so, there.
I don't recall that item, I remember talking about it. We have about a half a million dollars, I think, budgeted in the operating budget for facilities and I don't know that it was distinctly mentioned.
Maybe I'm wrong, but I have to go through.
Well, we'll look it up. Yeah, we'll, we could go through, it's certainly a great project, so yes, sir.
Mr. Moore?
Good evening, everyone. Last year, Jasper County Neighbors United adopted the Hardyville Senior Citizens Center and so we threw them a barbecue last year. You were there, Councilor McLaughlin, and it was so good and it, everybody enjoyed it. They asked if we could do a two-day festival this year. So what we decided to do is the first annual Hardyville Jasper County Senior Spring Flame Weekend. On Friday, May the 5th, we are going to have vendors with barbecue, with seafood for the seniors and we also going to have the Ayers Property Preservation out of Charleston's coming to do a two-hour presentation. We also going to talk about wills and trusts and all that kind of stuff for seniors. And on Saturday night, we're going to have a black tie red carpet affair at the Hardyville Rec Center from four in the afternoon until nine o'clock at night. So we are asking for sponsorship. Hardyville is taking this up at their next meeting and so I was glad to see that you all entertained it also. We have four flagship positions at 2500 and we have captain of the fleet for 35. I mean, we'll take whatever you give us, but we are trying not to let any senior pay for their meals or the black tie affair. It's red carpet ballet, they're going to be sit down, it's a sit-down dinner, a program, they're going to take pictures. They're going to take pictures, the whole nine yards. And the seniors in this area deserve to be accommodated too. We don't have anything for the seniors. So hopefully, this will become our annual fundraiser for J.C. and U. And it can grow bigger and better so we can include all the senior communities around here next year so we can have bigger games like ping pong, badminton. What's the little game they play now?
Pickleball.
Pickleball, all of that. So we want to incorporate all that, but we couldn't do it this year because we got started a little bit late. But we're moving right along. Everything's going well. We, everything is taken care of. We got all the buildings secured. We got everything that the city is asking us to provide to them already. So we're just asking for your support for a donation to make this happen for the seniors.
Do you have any idea how many are tuned?
120. We have 120 tickets. But we are looking to accommodate 75 or 80 seniors, and then we're going to sell the rest of the ticket to the public. So each center is going to get, I went out last month to each of the senior centers and talked to them about the event, and they all were excited. And 25 tickets, we said we'll give 25 tickets to each senior citizen, and then the rest we'll sell to the public. So I just need your support.
I'm going to make a motion that the Jasper County Council considers the $3,500 sponsorship. I'll unfavourably signify by saying no.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Next, we need a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this consent agenda.
Sir. I'll unfavourably signify by saying no. I make a motion, okay. Councilmember comments? We don't have any old business. Can't be anything like that.
Yep, nothing to ask. I just, I had a meeting at the Seventh U-Haul Church. N.O.A.C.T. held a community outreach. And the sheriff was there, the Harterville police were there. And I was prepared for the worst, but it was really a great time. They had, they connected together, they approved everything. The police were clapped. I mean, it was just thrilling. And then I, just recently, I attended a meeting at the lovely Hill Baptist Church about the Airs Property. And I've given that information to other churches to get, it's a lot of information. They just think it's about land, but it is about the wills and, very simple. People just don't know what they have to do. It's simple. It's just, they got to do it. So, thank you.
That's that.
Thank you, Lord, for another day.
Councilman Galloway.
The only upcoming I'd like to make is what we talked about earlier, about the crash, setting up the nuisance orders. And I've been, I told Mr. David Murphy, and I want all of us to give it some consideration for helping him. And let this Jasper County clean up. It is really, I wrote this county last week, and it's really pathetic in the area. I jumped up, it was, I want to try to get on the road, get it ditched. And I said, I talked with Mr. David Murphy, and he's the only one man. And we got, we got to do something to clean this county up. If you were right in the county, you could see what I'm talking about, it's facts, not pictures. And I think Mr. Murphy is straight out. The only way he could do is the only one man, he's the colored county. And we really need to get the other county in shape. I'd like the county council and the administrator and whoever to get involved. Let's get involved and clean out the county up. And let's put a real hard push on it. If we need more help, let's give them help and let's get it up. That's all I got.
Thank you. Ms. Clark.
Real brief, I spoke at the State of the County address last week. Well-attended at Margaritaville along with both majors. And I really enjoyed talking about Jasper County, one of my favorite things to do. We had our Southern Carolina Alliance Quarterly Board meeting at USC South Hachy in Allendale last week. I served as chair, and we had a very well-attended event. I would like to take a moment and have a moment of silence for Reverend Gregory, who, the chairman of Jasper County Council, was killed in a single car automobile accident last week on I-95. So let's keep him and his family in our prayers. I believe that services with Allen Galloway Funeral Home is scheduled for this Saturday. You can look on their website for details. But if y'all will, we'll have a moment of silence in his honor and his family, please.
Thank you. Let's keep this family in our prayers. Okay, nothing further. At this time, I will remind council that you'll be receiving an email. We've got a retreat to schedule, a couple of workshops to schedule. So we'll be trying to pick some dates that's convenient for everybody. We got a lot of work to do, and we need to get those dates done and get that work done as quickly.
No, I was going to make a motion to the chairman.
Yeah, well, go ahead, get him ready.
I'm making a motion to the chairman.
Thanks. All in favor, stand up. Thank you all for being with us.
Thank you.